Okay. I hereby call this town meeting to order. Welcome and thank you for coming. I'm Joe LaValle, your town moderator. These past few years, we've lost so many longtime, very special townspeople that continued to help make this place what it is. However, just know that there are many younger and just as committed people coming along. They care as much about this town as we all do, and those before us. Just give them time, chances, and some extra little bit of lift. Like, and I'll name a few, Stephanie Slisch, working on the Hatfield Community Gardens. I had my doubts.[48.71][48.71](APPLAUSE). And honestly, I had my doubts, but they took the time to listen and understand. I think it'll be just fine. Maybe not exactly as any one of us might have done it, but just good as an experiment. And Saban Tripp and Liz Volinger on the HEF. Some of you might not know it's the Hatfield Education Foundation. Who are so dedicated, like many other groups, that are helping out our schools. And Eliza Lanigan's at the library. Where they're trying to become so much more than a library, limited only to their building. And so many other younger than us that are just moving along with great ideas. And the young farmers like Harrison Bardwell, Jeff Segrodnik, Jason Antos, Max Bartlett, as well as many others. Some offering roadside produce, not an easy task, but so appreciated, and continuing our farming heritage. And yes, the Williamses and Swazlowski Farms as well. From small, yet 13 generations young, to impressively large. Now we have wineries and so many other small businesses starting up here. These names are just a few of so many, and I use these as examples. And not to ignore or miss anyone by name, yet to celebrate and say, "Thanks for showing us that Hatfield continues to have a bright future." We all want to keep the old Hatfield we always knew, but so don't they, just with a more modern tone? Please help them, and so many more, that I cannot name them all here. But when you see someone with ideas, help them understand that we did it one way so they can try to cherish that, yet allow this town to grow and continue to prosper. If they understand the past, maybe they will seek out change a little bit more slowly so as not to scare us. So let's get this immediate housekeeping behind us and look to really a bright future that any one of us might or might not see personally. But no, it's good lessons learned, never came easily, as we all know, yet neither do they when starting out. So I applaud these young people. I think they're quite impressive, and I think some days we tend to forget that.[193.62][193.62](APPLAUSE). With that said, if you're not a registered voter, you need to sit toward the bleachers and when there's a reason to count, that there's no confusion. Unless you have some difficulty, do your best to sit near the sidelines. After all, it's our gym, so thank you for that. Each year I point out that we will move along in a respectful manner due to reaching 10 o'clock. It's late for those with young children at home and our seniors. And I understand this more each year myself. As new town members remind me, it's easy for us to understand that we all know who's up here tonight. So if I can take a moment to introduce some that help our town operate day to day, so if you just raise your hand, we have on the Board of Selectmen Brian Moriarty, Ed Jaworski, Cindy Doty's out of town. On the finance, Darrell Williams, Paul Fisher, Shawn Robinson, Betsy Ryder, and Shawn Berry. The town administrator, Marlene Machansky. Lydia Zish, the town clerk. Town accountant, Derek Geiser. School superintendent, John Robert. DPW director, Phil Genovese. And town collector, Edwin Palasamo. Now I'd like to point out that a lot of careful consideration, time, and input has been spent on these articles. Presented tonight for your consideration, taken by some very dedicated people during a lot of posted meetings, all year leading up to tonight. These meetings serve to explain and discuss the details of ideas and issues, and help each board craft a proposed article to present to townspeople. As a whole, their articles to either vote for or against tonight. With this said, I ask all here to be mindful of why we're here. Not to delve into such details that have already been discussed at great length, but to consider whether we as a town approve or not each article, as it's presented to the best of our abilities, with some discussion that helps explain a little bit more. Or raise some new information that came about since those meetings that are new to the article. This is out of respect for all of you that did attend the many meetings held during the year, yet not to rule out anyone else. These meetings are all available, as I say each year on YouTube, they're available on our channel 15. Now I will say there are some that missed or didn't attend these, and yet they wish to rewrite or amend these articles here in their final form at the last minute. This is where much time is consumed, and you need to be aware of this. At times it's certainly welcome and necessary, while at others, it's a tactic, resulting in either poor outcomes, as we've seen in some recent years, or resulting in getting so complicated that common sense has returned us to the original article. I've been very generous in allowing most amendments, but after, I started going to seminars with other moderators to see what other towns have for issues. And after a few, I do try to stay a little tighter to the process. In no way do we ever mean to show any disrespect to the process, or to anyone, but rather to respect your time and your patience. If we seem to be going off into specifics that have already been discussed, I'll politely close it off and go on to the next question. Otherwise, we'll be here for more nights than any of you here have the patience to sit through. I also ask department heads and committees that if there are no inquiries, please try to refrain from giving a very detailed explanation, as it's already been done. This is in no way meant to be rude or condescending, but rather to allow the process to move forward. If there are no questions to the article, obviously you did your homework, and educated the townspeople during the year of your quite important article. As moderator for over 15 years now, I really do thank you for your trust, and I hope to never let up on my commitment to all of you and this very special place called Hatfield. This annual town meeting process has been going on for almost 350 years. It's a meeting put together a very long time ago by the people to include the position of moderator, town clerk, and you. We carefully watch for honesty, trust, and the historic knowledge that changing this process can alter the outcome without ever being aware of its consequences. So we hold true to what has worked for so long to serve our past, present, and future. So always be cautious of change to this process, and thank you for coming tonight. Let's begin. Brian? He's gonna have a little presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's always a great honor to acknowledge publicly, for the first time, the person for whom the annual Town of Hatfield report is dedicated to. This year's recipient has been a vital part of our school district for close to 40 years. Day in and day out, they gave of themselves, not only for our children, but for the parents and the staff as well. They possess an incredible work ethic and an attitude of "do what you have to do and get the job done." The countless hours of dedicated service to our school community over the years have not gone unnoticed and are appreciated by all of us in Hatfield. The love they have for our district and town's strong traditions are unparalleled, in my opinion. As a school committee member, a parent of two Smith Academy graduates, and a friend of this year's recipient, I wish to congratulate them on their upcoming retirement. It is well deserved. So, I ask the townspeople and members of the audience to join me in congratulating this year's town report recipient, Brenda Campisti-Cheer.[551.04][551.04](APPLAUSE). And while I'm getting my hug and yelled at by Brenda, I wanna, I'd like you to hear a quote from Mr. Fran Gudgen. Fran's quote is, "Brenda is the heart and soul of Smith Academy," and I couldn't agree more. Thank you very much.
I have to say, Brenda, you're essentially the grandmother to thousands and thousands of people. You betcha. You betcha. And that's a proud thing. Most kids will tell their grandmother more than they'll ever tell their mother. Okay, let's roll.
That was the fun part of town meeting. Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move we take up Article 2.
The motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 2 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move that the town take up Article 2.
The motion's been ma-
Well, yeah, I mean, there's gonna be some discussion.
Darrell has a question, a comment?
Discussion.
Discussion.
Um, I just wanted to give some background on Article 2 for townspeople.
Darrell, can you pull the mic a little closer to you? Thank you.
Sorry. I generally have a really big mouth, so, anyway. I just wanted to do a little explanation of Article 2. This is money, this $46,000, was paid out of the Community Preservation Fund several years ago. It was done so in error, and it's something that we recognize that the town needs to pay back to the Community Preservation Fund. Unfortunately, you'll see it says "not recommended by the Finance Committee," and the only reason it's not recommended by the Finance Committee is we don't have any money to pay it back at this time. So, it is our plan going forward that when we do have money, we will certainly pay this back. We've got no free cash in our budget this year, thus you see no capital items and things like that. But I just wanted people to understand that, we understand that this is a bill, that this is a sum of money that we do owe Community Preservation, and we will pay it back when we have the funds to do so. And so I make a motion that we table this article at this time.
Is there a second? There's a motion made and seconded to table Article 2. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move that we take up Article 3.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 3 is in your handout.
I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to apply for, accept, and expend, without appropriation, any state or federal grants and gifts and awards from any public or private source that become available in fiscal year 2019.
You've heard the motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
It's okay, we're even now.
Yeah.
I move we take up Article 4.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 4 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move that the town vote to raise and authorize its treasurer to enter into a compensating balance agreement, or agreements, for fiscal year 2019 pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 53F of the General Laws.
You've heard Article 4, as in your handout, and these first few articles are ones, these are just sort of housecleaning we have to do each and every year. So is there any discussion on Article 4? All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move we take up Article 5.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 5 is in your handout.
I move that the town vote to appropriate $242,524 from the town's transportation bond issue appointment and to authorize signing of memorandum of agreement with the State Department of Public Works in that regard, all pursuant to Chapter 90 of the General Laws.
Any discussion? Michael.
Mike Cahill, North Street, I'm gonna ask my perennial question. Could our DPW director please indicate to us how he plans on using this Chapter 90 money in fiscal 19?
Fiscal 19 money will be used, we're going to do Pantry Road from the West Street intersection to the joint where we ended off. So, that road was only partially done, so we're gonna do it from that section, and the rest of the money will be used for the paved part of Mountain Road going up the hill because the road is concaved in the center and it's washing out all the time. So we're gonna crown the road and repave it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move we take up Article 6.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 6 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move that the town vote to have its elected town treasurer and town collector become an appointed town treasurer-collector of the town of Hatfield pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 1B, subject to acceptance by an official ballot question.
Second. Second.
Yes.
Motion's been made and seconded under Article 6. Is there any discussion?
Okay, so, this article really should be two separate articles. The first to debate changing 248 years of historically electing these town officers and instead appointing them by the Selectmen. The second should be to decide if combining the two positions is actually better than keeping them separate. First, let me address the appointing. Since 2008, the Selectmen have tried and failed to get the power to appoint the collector four times. Each time, the voters of our small town have retained their right to elect the collector. Then in the last few years, thanks to unexpected circumstances, such as the treasurer passing away and the longtime collector moving to the Cape, the Selectmen were allowed to fill these positions by appointment. Also during this time period, the longtime town accountant retired. Before we consider whether to surrender our right as voters to give the Selectmen the power to appoint the treasurer, consider how well they select candidates for key financial positions, and whether these important appointments are attributable to the financial crisis the town currently finds it's in. One commonality of recent appointments is although the Selectmen advertised regionally for qualified candidates, each appointment for accountant, collector, and treasurer, they selected individuals with no prior municipal experience or training. The last Town Auditor's Report in August cited the treasurer and accountant on-the-job training as a principal cause for the continuing problem of financial problems in Hatfield. Worse still, using the accountant as an example of a Selectman's appointment, they've entered into an employment contract where if the Selectmen terminate his employment, they're on the hook, we are on the hook, for a severance payment of over $14,000. So instead, the Selectmen have outsourced the work to municipal base state services of Maynard and still pay the accountant's full salary. A plan, by the way, they want us to continue in the budget for our next fiscal year. So the question is, will appointing a collector and treasurer solve the Hatfield's financial problems? Clearly, it won't address the problem of finding seasoned, trained, and qualified candidates. As a small town, we already know from past experience, we're unable to offer high enough salaries. Plus, the competition for a small pool of qualified applicants is ever-present from other towns, so even if the Selectmen get lucky, chances are, any fully qualified appointee will be hired away in short term by another town. Then there's the second part of the article regarding combining the treasurer and collector that needs to be addressed factually. Hatfield has already tried this experiment of combining the jobs of treasurer and collector in the last election, and it resulted in worsening financial crisis. Former treasurers and collectors will tell you, these are not only very different jobs, but in Hatfield, each require at least 30 hours a week to do well, not to mention requiring different training and prior experience. In fact, I doubt you will find any other town around Hatfield where these positions are combined. Should this article pass, and we combine these two positions, it'll make the Selectmen's job even more of a challenge to find any trained, experienced candidate to do both jobs effectively and efficiently. And we'll end up with more on-the-job training further exacerbating our financial crisis. So what's the better choice? As voters, we need a better reason to give up our power to elect candidates than just giving the power to the Selectmen, who sadly have shown they not only select untrained and inexperienced appointees, but enter into contracts that make it difficult to replace them.
Excuse me, Chris, how many more pages?
I'm almost done.
Okay.
Okay. At least when we elect a collector and treasurer, we can recall them if they fail, or worse, not reelect them. As voters and shareholders of our town, we can help our Selectmen now, when the budget comes up, to shift salary and expense amounts for the accountant, treasurer, and collector so the town can move to outsourcing accounting, payroll, tax billing, and other important financial tasks that has been proven to work in Hadley and other small towns in Massachusetts. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? All those in, go ahead.
I'll keep it short. Larry Grossman, King Street. I just want to remind everyone, this is the third attempt by the Selectmen to merge these positions and to take away our vote for these two offices. The town's been around a few hundred years. Actually, these offices go back to the formation of the town. We've always elected them. They've had good people, bad people, questionable people. The job has gotten done. And it's concerning me that we would take away the vote, one. Two, that we would combine these positions, which no other town of our size has. And third, leave it the responsibility of the Select Board to hire, sometimes with very large contracts, difficult to terminate these positions. My feeling is, let's vote for these offices and keep the tradition in Hatfield.
Go ahead. Your mic.
Got it? The recommendations brought forth tonight, once again.
Brian, you gotta get a little closer to the mic.
Still? How's that?
There you go.
All right. I'll lean in, thank you. So this is the third or fourth attempt at combining the positions and asking the townspeople to allow them to be appointed. Nothing's changed from the original thought, which is the Department of Revenue and their subgroup of the Department of Local Services is making this recommendation to pretty much every city and town in the state of Massachusetts. And it's happening all around us and throughout the state. So, we would rather be able to have an appointment through a hiring process, being able to look at resumes and background and credentials for those positions. That's the reason this article is on the town floor tonight.
Darrell, did you have your hand up?
Yeah. Well, I just wanted to remind everyone that the Finance Committee does recommend this. As far as holding elected officials accountable, the Select Board will still be able to be held accountable in elections if the town members don't support how the person they appoint performs in the duty. And I would refer you all to the letter that the Finance Committee provided on the table back there. We strongly recommend this and think it's important to the town's finances.
And when you come up, if you just state your name and the street you live on, not the house number, but it gives people an idea where you're coming from.
Ron Punska, Maple Street. Although I rarely agree with Larry and Chris on many things, I really agree with them on this. We have no evidence that the Select Board or the committees can hire competent people in the positions. And other issue is, once someone's been hired, it takes a long time to get them out of that position. As I said, we can recall someone and remove that person. So I fully agree with them, that I do not believe we should pass this article. Thank you.
I'm gonna take the opposite stance here and ask that we vote in favor of this, for a couple of reasons. Back some 20 or so years ago, when I was on the Board of Selectmen, I have to recall from a personal experience with the then-existing town collector, who was an elected person, and who resisted the Selectmen's suggestions and encouragement to adopt a new software system and to implement some financial controls in that office that would have facilitated the processing of funds and expenditure of funds through the community. I, at that point, had never experienced a level of frustration with an elected position so critical to this community as I did back then. And since then, I've literally dreamed of a time when Hatfield would be able to appoint a person to that position, which is so incredibly critical to the operation of our community. I just wanted people to take a look at the financial summary spreadsheet here, and you're gonna see something called "total gross budget." That's the budget that the Finance Committee have basically presented to us tonight, the total budget. Not just the operating budget, but the total receipts of the community. Every one of those dollars comes into this position and is under the control of this position, and needs to be accounted for by this position. And this position provides direction to our town accountant, who then enters things supposedly correctly into our books. Now, we're in the midst of a major town financial crisis at this point, some of which may be due to the fact that we had an elected person in this position, some maybe due to other reasons. Finance Committee perhaps could explain later on our current situation, but I am very much in favor of this. It's time that our Board of Selectmen can manage the person in this job and can provide them with direction, can provide them with expectations, and most importantly, can hold them or that person accountable for the results on a timely basis.
Thank you, Michael, very much. Okay, I'm gonna, I, excuse me?
Can I call a question?
Yes, you can.
Sure.
No, he called the question. He called the question. No, Larry, we're gonna go to, we're gonna go to a vote. He called the question.
The Finance Committee called this question.
An individual-
I hope every voter realizes what just happened. He basically wants to shut off the debate.
Okay. Do you want to say something? Go ahead, Larry. Please come up and say something. Well, she's going to.
Hi, Ellen Bogina, Prospect Street. I'd like to remind everyone that the situation that had recently occurred over the past few years began as a hiring by the Selectmen. And then that person ran for the position and was reelected, but it began by the hiring. I have concerns for the town in looking at the people who are applying for positions and making sure that they are vetted properly, that they have the proper credentials, proper licensing, whether they are bonded. I think these are people that need to come forward and run, and I don't want to give up my right to vote. And I just want to remind everyone that part of this was started as a hiring. So, I don't agree with Mr. Cahill, and I agree with the gentleman over here. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, Brian.
For clarification, the appointment was made in the collector's position only, not the collector and the treasurer, by the Board of Selectmen.
Say it louder, please.
We all said? What I said was, I just wanted to point out that the initial appointment by the Board of Selectmen was to the collector position. It was not to the treasurer position. That was an elected position from the get-go.
Okay, I'm gonna go to a vote on this. All those in favor of Article 6 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay.
Nay.
Article carries. Simple majority. Simple majority, we've already covered this in past meetings. We've already covered this in past meetings. Next item, please. Are you ready? Mr. Jaworski.
I believe this calls for a count. This is important.
Do we need a count or not? Simple majority. Thank you. Please start in the next article.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move we take up Article 7.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 7 in your handout.
I move that the town vote to have the selectmen appoint a town government study committee to explore the structure of the chief elected officers of the town that would increase its current three-member board to a selectmen of five-member board of selectmen.
You've heard Article 7. Is there any discussion?
It's written fairly poorly. Does this mean that this study will explore the structure, but then also you are right now going to expand the Board of Selectmen to five? Or is the study going to include the study of the chief elected officers and maybe look at the membership? Does this do both?
The intent of this article is to ask the townspeople if they are interested in the select board as it stands now, investigating what would it take to go to five members? In other words, is it simply a town vote? Is it simply a town meeting? Is it a state? To answer your question, Larry, we didn't want to go through all the legwork if the town didn't have an appetite for it. The reason it's on here, this was brought forward by the select board, is given the importance of open meeting laws and trying to avoid the appearance or the perception of violating the open meeting law. I mean, if Ed and I run into each other big why, we just turn around and walk the other way, because we don't want to be seen as deliberating. It also would help bring two more opinions to any decision that the town needs to make. It would allow for two board members to meet and have discussions and do some research on particular topics and projects. And I would remind people that the Planning Board, the Rec Committee, the School Committee, and a host of others in town already have five members. If somebody's sick, if somebody's ill, if somebody's on vacation, it doesn't change the balance, because there would still be four members there. That's the reason it's being brought forward.
Thanks, Brian. I just want to remind you, I brought this article up six times, maybe eight times, at town meeting to expand the board to five members. The clerk, well, the former clerk will acknowledge that. And the response I got was, if it broke, don't break it, don't change it. And we don't want, we can't find three people. How could we find five? So, I am definitely a believer in five, and I'm kind of surprised that you've come around to this after about 15 years of me raising this issue, but I appreciate that. The only thing I would have liked to have seen is Article 6 after Article 7, because I believe that the structure of collector, treasurer.
Okay, Larry, keep it within the scope of the article.
Could, yes, it could have been all part of the structure.
The scope of the article is to see if the townspeople are willing to let them investigate the process, not do it, just investigate the process.
Right. That's fine.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of Article 7 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Article passes.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move we take up Article 8.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 8 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move that the town vote to establish an anniversary special fund for the town's 350th anniversary and further to vote to appropriate the sum of $100 for the purpose of implementation of the town's 350th anniversary in the year 2020 and to meet said appropriation from taxation.
You've heard Article 8 as written. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Article passes. Simple majority.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move that we take up Article 9.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 9 is in your handout.
I move that the town vote to amend the Town of Hatfield bylaws by adding a new Section 2.14 to Article 2, General Police Regulations as follows. Political and/or campaign signs. Section 2.14, no person shall erect, maintain, or display any political and/or campaign signs on town property. Other than on Routes 5 and 10, political and/or campaign signs erected, maintained, or displayed on personal property shall be at a distance from the road sufficient enough so as not to impair driver's sight lines at intersections. Political and/or campaign signs erected on personal property along Routes 5 and 10 must be outside of the state road taken.
You've heard Article 9 as written. Is there any discussion?
This is such a directed assault on our political system. I've been going to town meetings since 1979, and I would never have thought this could happen in Hatfield. This article is presented by one person, who says that she's gotten a few phone calls and because the signs are tacky? Come on. Okay, at least 90% or more of the signs that are up right now would not be legal, and I'm gonna tell you why. Because town bounds come in, sometimes 10 feet, sometimes 30 feet. You wouldn't be allowed to have signs at the election. Let's just get this over with. Vote this down.
Any other discussion?
Everybody in this room should be standing like a Bernie Sanders campaign. This is outrageous. This is giving police power. Remember, this is a police regulation. The people didn't vote want this. There's no one in this room that should want this.
Larry, just face forward. They'll hear you.
It's just, there's no problem with campaign signs. They last about five weeks. Maybe the town clerk got a phone call that somebody didn't like a sign on 510. The state workers, on their way to coffee, picked up all the signs and brought them to her office. That was the major crisis. But for us to invoke something like this in Hatfield is unbelievable.
Michael? Jane, I'll get you in a minute.
I agree with the previous speakers. I think I have an appreciation for the intent here, but the scope of this is just so broad, as Christopher, one of them, pointed out. I mean, from the center line at every road in Hatfield, it's at least 15 to 20 feet of town property, which means that most of the political signs that are up there right now, today, are on town property. That would mean that all of those signs could not be put where they're put, which I think is just completely impractical. I'm also with them in terms of, I mean, aren't we supposed to encourage people to participate in this community and to run for office in this community? And for a five- or six-week period, once a year, we're gonna be inundated with campaign signs? But believe me, on Wednesday, the 15th, 16th, those campaign signs are gonna be gone. So, I mean, you know, let's stand up as a community and say, hey, listen, you know, they may be unsightly, they may get in the way of people driving on occasion, but for a four- or five- or six-week period, you know, let's encourage the young people in this community to run, and some of the old ones, but let's encourage public involvement here in Hatfield and not discourage it by having people having to measure where they should place a sign. It's just very impractical and I don't think meets with our culture at all.
Sure. Go ahead. Jane, start up.
The reason I brought this forward is I do get several phone calls every election period. The town crew has to, when they're mowing, has to take signs down, put signs back up. Your tax dollars are going for them to do that. I've gotten calls from people that the signs are tacky. They, you know, they don't think it looks good. And why are people allowed to put town signs or campaign signs on property that I, you know, that's owned by everyone? When you put a political sign, you need to get permission from the homeowner. Well, we all own town property. Has that person gotten permission from everyone to put their sign up? It's up to you. I really don't care. I want something that tells me so when someone calls, I can say, one way or the other, a definitive answer. So, I brought it to town meeting so the townspeople can vote on it. If you agree, you can vote yes. If you disagree, you can vote no. It's totally up to you. As far as where the signs can be put in town, you're reading it incorrectly. The way it's worded, if it's within town, it just has to not obstruct sight lines at an intersection. I have one right at my, as I pull out of my driveway right now, that as I look to the right, it does impede a certain portion of my sight line. If it's on Routes 5 and 10, this is, the state has said this, it's gotta be outside the line. So, yes, those have to be much further back, because the state taking can be anywhere from 10 feet to 15 feet to 30 feet. You don't know. But generally, if it's back a good 15 or 20 feet, the state will be okay with it. But in town, yes, they can be closer, you know, it'll be on town property, but the bylaw doesn't say that that's not okay.
Okay, Jane, Jane had a comment.
Jane Betzel, Off Circle Drive. I'm just curious if you could clarify, is this just political signs or are these tag sale signs or these house signs? What are we talking? Just political signs? Could you please clarify that?
That's all it speaks to is political.
This, go ahead.
Yes, that's all it speaks to is political and/or campaign signs.
By voting for this article, that means next week, when we have an election, no one can put signs across from the town or on the signs, and those do not obstruct any views for motor vehicles, they do not impede mowing of the lawn when the election is. So, this is really a ridiculous article.
Go ahead.
Hi, Stephanie Slish, Straits Road. First of all, I'd just like to say I don't think there's anything tacky about democracy. And I would like to, I like, again, I appreciate maybe the conversation that this is having. However, as it's written, I do not support this, because it's not clear exactly what town prop, the way you mentioned 5 and 10 is what has to be the certain feet from the road, but the first line says that it can't be displayed on town property. And as mentioned, town owns frontage on everyone's property. And again, I also support, if we're gonna be restricting campaign signs, we should be talking about real estate signs, landscaping signs that are out a lot longer than during the campaign season.
And this is democracy. It's your property, and they're just asking you the question. So, all, go ahead.
And the second sentence says, "other than Routes 5 and 10," meaning anywhere outside of Routes 5 and 10, which is in town. The signs have to be a distance from the road sufficient to not obstruct a view.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion fails.
Thank you. Now I know.
Now that's clear.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move we take up Article 10.
My second.
Article 10 has been brought up and seconded as in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move that the town vote to amend the Town of Hatfield bylaws by adding Article 16 to establish and authorize revolving funds for use by certain town departments, boards, committees, agencies, or officers under Massachusetts General Law is 44, Section 53E and a half, as set forth in your summary handout.
So, you have Article 10 in your hand concerning Article 16 of our bylaws. And if you take a minute to look through them, and if anyone has some discussion on And I asked them to present it this way, not to bore you with every single line written there, but you do have it in your handouts. Is there any discussion on this?
We never had a bunch of enterprise funds. And then we, through a previous administration, we created several for highway, for inspection services, for a couple others. Then, when we had a financial crisis, everyone was saying, you had to go to these pockets of enterprise funds and get some money. And then they were saying, don't, we shouldn't have had all these enterprise funds. But now, we're going, so is there a new way of thinking that we're returning now to enterprise funds?
Larry, it's a revolving fund. It's a revolving, Larry, it's a revolving fund, not a, it's a revolving fund, not an enterprise fund.
Oh, I mean, a revolving.
It's a revolving fund, not an enterprise fund for the three departments listed there, because they expend and receive, expend monies and receive monies, and it's just to kind of keep it going. Okay, okay.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Michael?
Is the Community Garden revolving fund a new revolving fund? Or which one of these, or are any of these three new revolving funds?
Community Gardens.
You want to take the mic?
Community Gardens.
Okay. And any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move we take up Article 11.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 11 is in your handout.
I move that the town vote to amend the Town of Hatfield zoning bylaws by adding 7B.0 marijuana establishments, as set forth in your summary.
Motion's been made, read, and seconded under Article 11. Is there any discussion on this? Bob Wagner.
Bob Wagner, Chair of the Planning Board. On behalf of the Planning Board, I just want to point out to the voters that, after careful consideration and conversations with a number of board members and officials here in town, the school committee through the school superintendent, the police chief, fire chief, and others, and then research done by the Planning Board, we are setting forth here zoning bylaws for the town to govern the time, place, and manner of marijuana establishments as set forth by the state's legislature and the Cannabis Control Commission. All the definitions that are included in the bylaw before you are actually set by the Cannabis Control Commission. What we're setting is where indeed in town, when and where these establishments can be placed. I want to point out to folks, particularly in the other standards and conditions, which is the 7B.5, that number, certainly, letter E is that there would be no more than two marijuana retailers located in town at any one time. This is actually, meets the minimum standard required by the state without us actually going through a vote to prohibit fewer than these. It's tied to the number of package store licenses, liquor licenses, that we have in town. And also, in the definition for marijuana retailer, which is H, under the definition section, I want to point out that retailers are prohibited from offering cannabis or marijuana products for the purposes of onsite social consumption. So, we would only allow offsite sales in the two, up to perhaps two retail establishments in town. Cannabis Control Commission is right now accepting applications for licenses. They expect to actually issue their first set of licenses by June 1st. We're not aware of anyone interested in a license to actually set up an establishment in Hatfield of any type for marijuana production or cultivation or sale. But if there is someone, and we are alerted to that by the Cannabis Control Commission, we're prepared. And that's why we are setting forth these bylaws tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? What's that? Sure.
I have received maybe three calls, no names, anything, just asking, do we have bylaws in place? I may be thinking, you know, very general, but I have gotten a couple, three calls.
Okay. All those in favor of Article 11 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Before we go any further, Bob, I just wanted to say, I really applaud you. Other than what the Finance Committee's been working on for their budget and all the hours you and your group have spent. you and your group have spent, countless hours, just covering every inch of this as possible, very delicately and extremely successfully. So thank you very much.
Yeah. Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move we take up Article 12.
Seconded.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 12 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move that the town vote to amend the Hatfield zoning bylaws by adding the following Section 3.0 use regulations as set forth in your summary handout.
So Article 12 in your handout, if you take a minute and look through it, if you have any questions, again, I gave them the okay to just suggested that, to read it this way so they didn't have to read every single letter and letter and letter to you as in your handout. So if there's any discussion, we'd be glad to have it. Okay. All those in favor of Article 12 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Article carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move we take up Article 13.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 13 is in your handout.
I move that the town vote to accept Mass General Law's Chapter 64 ends of Section 3 as amended under Section 13 of Chapter 55 of the Acts of 2017, an act to ensure safe access to marijuana by imposing a local sales tax upon sale or transfer of marijuana or marijuana products by a marijuana retailer operating with the town of Hatfield to anyone other than a marijuana establishment at a rate of 3% of the total sales price received by the marijuana retailer as a consideration for the sale of marijuana or marijuana products.
Motion's been read and seconded as in your handout.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move we take up Article 14.
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 14 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $1,100 from ambulance surplus for the purpose of paying a prior year bill for the ambulance department.
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded as read in Article 14. Is there any discussion? Now, for some reason, under state law rules, this has to be a four fifths vote. I don't know why, but anyway, so it should be pretty much unanimous if it's going to pass. So, all those in favor of Article 14 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Article carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move that we take up Article 15.
Motion's been made and.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate.
The town only gave you authority to declare.
So do you need a count on the four fifths?
That's what I'm thinking, you need a count on the four fifths. I heard a nay.
All right. What if we do that one more time? If there's any nays, we have to do a count. So let's take Article 14 again. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Now she's happy. She keeps us honest. Okay.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move we take up Article 15.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 15 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $748 for the purpose of paying a prior year bill for the town collector and to meet said appropriation from taxation.
You've heard Article 15 as read. Again, this is a four fifths vote, the same thing. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying, excuse me? Could you?
Just a point of information, could you indicate what the bill is for, general category?
Name and address. Your name and.
Yeah, your name and your street, you're on.
Oh, sorry. Charles Hopkins Elm Street.
Thank you. And does somebody want to answer what that bill is for? Marlene?
Speak to that. This invoice is for the, at that time, the town's deputy collector for his services. So that was a prior year bill. So it requires town meeting authorization.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move we take up Article 16.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 16 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $86.50 for the purpose of paying a prior year bill for the Department of Public Works and to meet said appropriation from taxation.
I second.
Article 16 as read and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Just for clarification, Michael Poshak, Prospect Street. The Article 15 and 16, that's going to be from FY '18 taxation, FY '19 taxation?
Do you find, finance, do you have?
'19, okay. All right.
That's been included in the budget?
Yes. Well, yeah.
Is there any other discussion? All right, this one's the same, four fifths. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
All right. We've got to have it unanimous or we do a count. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Article carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move that we take up Article 17.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 17 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate a reserve from the community preservation annual revenues and the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for committee administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and other expenses in fiscal year 2019, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation. Appropriations from FY 2019 estimated revenues for committee administrative expenses, $8,250. Reserves from fiscal year 2019 estimated revenues for historic resource reserve, $19,600. From FY 2019 estimated revenues for community housing reserve, $19,600. From FY 2019 estimated revenues for open space reserve, $19,600. From FY 2019 estimated revenues for budgeted reserve, $102,950.
You've heard the article of 17 read. Is there any discussion? Michael?
I have a quick question to reflect back on community preservation and how it all began, and maybe Bob can talk to this or the Finance Committee. But as I recall, we have a 3% additional tax levy, if you will, that's dedicated to the community preservation fund. So where, where does that occur in our financial statements? Is that in our budget? Where is that additional 3% levy that we're raising each year from each of us as a property owner? Where's, where's, where's the income stated in, in our financials? Is it first page on the summary?
On the summary.
And.
Under receipts. Is it listed?
Yeah.
It's there? Yep. Under receipts, fourth line, it looks like.
And when you guys talk, can you pull the mic closer to you?
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
I understand what they're going to spend the money on for the.
You got to talk into the mic.
I'm sorry. I understand what the money's going for and the others, but this does not say what the $128,950 will be for.
Bob Wagner, you want to get that?
So what you have before you is, in anticipation of receipts, both from local collections and then the state match that we would otherwise get from the Community Preservation Trust Fund, we have to, the law requires that we set aside 10% of how much we receive for historic resources reserve, community housing reserve, and then open space reserve. The remaining 70% less the $8,250 that we set aside for our administrative expenses goes into this budgeted reserve account, which can be used for any of those three items, historic resources, community housing, or open space, or recreation projects. The funding is not allocated at this point because we have to wait for applications and proposals, which is what you're going to consider in Articles 18, 19, and 20 from previous money received. This is for money going forward. So it just lays out the receipts that was acknowledged earlier, but then also, they then are segregated by accounts, which Derek does in our chart of accounts so that we meet the state requirements. So these, these funds are not telling us what projects this money is going to be used for, but what, what categories this money will be used for. And the budgeted reserve is for any of the three, and then recreation.
Thank you, Bob. Any other discussion, Mike?
Just a quick question, and thank you for pointing out where it is on the, on the financial summary. Then it begs the question, this year you guys have plugged in $196,000 for community preservation fund receipts. Last year's number was $170,000 more than that. Why?
I think Bob can answer that.
Darryl, can you put the mic to your, Darryl, can you put the mic?
I would, I'm going to guess that it's because we hadn't paid our tax bills. Because the CPC money is received, the local money is received through our surcharge, and our tax bills only went out here in, you know, we just paid two bills here on May 1st. So that's going to account for some of the money being less. Also, Mike, last year, I believe we got about a 65% match from the state, and this year it's at 55% through no fault of ours, but rather that the CPA, the statewide trust fund is dropping in receipts due to, you know, still rebuilding from the economic collapse of '08. Also, there's more communities around the state that have CPA funds now. So while we got a 55% match this last year, the statewide average was only 25%. So a little less from the state, and also, we haven't accounted for all the money that we're going to get through our taxation.
Is there any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of Article 17 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Article carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move to take up Article 18.
Get a second.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 18 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move that the town vote to appropriate by transfer from the community preservation undesignated fund account the sum of $96,400 to contribute to the costs to create an athletic field at Smith Academy, 34 School Street, under the direction of the Hatfield School Committee. Said fund shall be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee.
I'll second.
You've heard Article 18 as written. Is there any discussion?
Not to debate the merits of this at all, but just financially, how come CPA money is being used at this large amount when school has quite a pot of money in charter or choice, sorry, that, what is that number? And then what is the school's contribution from that fund? Or how did the $96,000 get arrived at? Because CPA money is really rather precious, and it just seems like it's an extraordinary expenditure from CPA. I don't think we've ever had one this high.
Who wants to?
Hi, Michael Poshak, Prospect Street. So the project that's proposed is, I believe it's 142, 142,000. We applied, the school department applied for a CPA grant. That's what the number is that you're looking at here, the $96,400. The balance will be the responsibility of the school department to raise. We have boosters, the SAG Parents Association, they're going to engage in raising the balance of the funds. So that's the origin of the project. The concept is to move the field hockey field from behind the center school up to, up here to Smith Academy. So it'll be here onsite. We'll have more contained here at this site. There'll be bathroom facilities in, obviously in this building. The locker rooms are here in this building. So that's the, that's genesis of the project.
Ron Punska, Maple Street. Why are we creating a new field hockey field? My impression is to create that, we're going to have to fill in some of the wetlands, and therefore would be some environmental issues. And I don't understand when we have a perfectly good field behind the old middle school that we're going to move it. It, all it needs is a little TLC. I'm just worrying and wondering what's going to happen to that land next year when you have a town meeting and the Board of Selectmen to say, well, now we've got a new field, so let's get rid of that land. I'm not in support of this article.
Okay. David?
David Keir, Bridge Street, and Athletic Director here at Smith Academy, and been very involved in this project from the beginning. My understanding, and Bob can correct me if I'm wrong, that we have not used any CPA funds for recreational purposes since this fund has been established. So this is a fairly big number, as some people would think, but this will be the first time that we've actually used it on recreational purposes. We've done a lot of projects through CPA from lots of other reasons, historical, et cetera, et cetera. I think we all believe, or I shouldn't say that, I believe that once that center school is full of people who have bought condos, and we have a field hockey game going on down there in some September, October date, where we're playing Long Meadow or Frontier or somebody else, and there's cars strewn everywhere, and people parking on the lawn, the police are going to be involved, and there's going to be complaints about what's going on in that field down there. And I agree with Mr. Robert in his vision of having this field up here at Smith Academy, where all of our fields can be contained all at once. This has no impact on the wetlands. We've been to the Conservation Commission, Phil has, as a DPW Director, to get all the necessary permits that will be needed to put this field in up there. We've done a lot of work on getting this together. This is a really reasonable project. It's for a really reasonable amount of money, and I think it will just complete this campus as far as our athletic fields are concerned. We've put a lot of time, effort, and energy into our athletic fields the last five to 10 years, and this is just another step in making them even better than where we have right now. Thank you.
Bob Wagner, Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. So actually, for the record, David, this would be the, we actually did the basketball courts across the, the street here was our first recreation project. But wearing my hat as a Planning Board member, you came before the Planning Board when we were making our decision on the center school construction, reconstruction. And if I remember correctly, you also pointed out that another problem with the field behind center school was safety. And being able to easily get an ambulance in there if need be, if someone were to injure a knee or an ankle during a field hockey game, we sadly enough had an even more traumatic occurrence from, with a field hockey player a number of years ago that required emergency personnel to get in there. And you were concerned at that meeting that we may not have enough egress and, to that site, which I would seem to also suggest. site, which I would seem to also suggest the need to move the field over here.
Yes, I pointed out at several meetings, that the issue's with, how are we going to access it as a town, as our DPW, as our custodial staff here who has to go down there and work on those fields, as the rec. Department is going to use those fields. And I think this also gives the opportunity for the rec. Department to expand their opportunities. The soccer fields behind the Hatfield Elementary School, neither of which are anywhere close to being regulation size, by not having our field hockey field behind the center school, that would allow the rec. Department to put a very nice, full-sized soccer field back there for the, for the kids at the elementary level. There's also a possibility they could also build even another softball or baseball infield on the other corner of the, of that field, where we also already have a very nice softball field that the rec. Department uses quite often. So that's spaced down there, I don't see any reason why the town would think to do anything with it. We did vote to leave it as recreational space in perpetuity, is my remembrance. So, any suggestion for anybody to think about getting rid of that, or selling it, or doing something else with it, other than leaving it as recreational fields, I think would be solely turned down by this body here today, at any other time. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Michael?
Yeah, I fully appreciate the school committee's logic here. The one thing that concerns me, and I don't have a problem with the CPA money, the CPC money going towards this, the one thing that bothers me here is the use of school choice funds. And, and perhaps as we get into the budget, we can talk a little bit more and have the school committee chip in, about how they've been asked to reduce their requested budget for this coming fiscal year, which doesn't include an athletic field. It basically means that there may be impacted instructional and/or staff impacts. And I would rather see us use, or have them use their school choice monies to replenish, or restore, or make sure that, that the cuts that the Finance Committee has asked them to make operationally this coming year, not be used to build an athletic field, but be used to, to protect the instructional program that may be impacted by the budget cuts they've been asked to make. So, that's what I would like to see us provide them with as a direction. I have no problems with CPC money being used towards this, but the, the issue of school choice monies being used at this particular point in time to subsidize the development of this field, I'm completely against.
Any, go ahead.
Kathy Engelhardt, South Street and School Committee. I would just like to point out to Mr. Cahill, and to everybody, that this year the school department is putting over $900,000 into our operating budget from school of choice, to help the town support our school department. Other towns don't do that. We have very carefully used our school of choice money. We've refurbished the bleachers, we've done many, many, many projects to our school buildings that any other town would have had to support. We have taken the burden off of the town to renovate or repair certain things in our department by using school of choice funds. We can't use school of choice funds for everything. The town still has an obligation to support the school district, and to support its buildings, and its fields, and the property.
Thank you. David, I usually do two to a person, so, are you getting up? Liz Kugler, to talk, come up.
Liz Kugler, Porter Avenue. Whether you vote for this article or not, and I don't know what town, committee, or department would handle this, but whether you have one fantastic field hockey team from Smith Academy playing down behind the center school, or recreation, you still need some sort of emergency plan to service that area.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody with something new? Oh, go ahead, and then we'll go to a vote.
Joan Cox, Main Street. Yeah, I wish we could come up with a different way of speaking, so that our backs aren't always to the townspeople when we talk. It's hard for some of us to hear, but I just want to make sure, I'm not clear, someone said that wetlands would be filled in for this, and then someone said, "Well, this has gone through the Conservation Commission." Are wetlands being filled in for this project, or not?
Phil, can you talk right into the mic there?
No, I'll speak to that. I appeared before the Conservation Commission three times, and their jurisdiction is there's no wetland impact, there's no wetlands in the area where the field is going to be filled. So, there is no issues, they signed off on it, so there's no wetland impact.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, okay. On Article 18, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Article carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move we take up Article 19.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 19, as in your handout.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate by transfer from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve Account to sum of $5,000 to contribute to the cost to create community gardens to be located on a portion of town-owned land on Billingsway, Map 221, Lot 183, under the direction of the Hatfield Agricultural Advisory Commission. Set funds shall be expanded under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee.
You've heard the, the Article 19, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Brian, just for a minute, I just want to explain, Joan, when you asked that question about facing forward, and sometimes I like to just educate a little bit, over the years, even with the prior moderator, Gordy Woodard, there were people that would, certain people would, would like to take the mic and face the people and directly look them down, and people found that very intimidating. And with most other towns, the same is true. So, when people talk to the moderator, "If you can't hear, please raise your hand," and I will ask the speaker to repeat it, or speak louder. So it's just meant so that people don't feel looked down upon, or intimidated, or whatnot. And that's been our practice for many, many years. But thank you for asking. Okay.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move we take up Article 20.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 20.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move that the town vote to appropriate by transfer from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve Account to sum of $15,000 for restoration and rehabilitation through the removal and control of invasive species on town-owned or controlled parcels purchased in, in, excuse me, purchased in all or in part with Community Preservation Funds, under the direction of the Hatfield Open Space Committee. Said fund shall be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee.
So you've heard Article 20 as read and seconded, is there any discussion? And Mark, I'll get you right after Joan.
Joan Cox, Main Street. I'd like to make sure that poison ivy is considered an invasive species, because I've asked the town several times to get rid of the vines that are crawling, poison ivy vines that are crawling up on trees in town, and kids play right under those trees, and the vines are still there. So I'm hoping that this will, this will, some of this money, it wouldn't take much to get rid of those things, but is poison ivy on the agenda in this article?
Does anybody know the answer to that? Bob Wagner.
Yeah, so for the purposes of this proposal, the, the use of CPA funds to control invasive species can only be used on properties that were otherwise purchased in part or in whole, as Brian said, with CPA funds. So, the, the majority, if not actually all of these funds, will be utilized on the properties, at least initially, out in the drinking water district area in West Hatfield, for the properties that have been purchased over the last number of years using CPA funds.
And Mark, you had a question, or a comment?
Mark Gilat, Elm Street, I'm on the Open Space Committee. We, we presented this article and, we proposed this article to the CPC. This money would be mainly to be used in recreation land that has been recently purchased through the use of CPA funds, mostly on the area, the Horse Mountain area. And the primary use would be for two species, not, not poison ivy, but for multiflora rose and for bittersweet, which is, in a lot of the areas of the town's forest land, recreation land, is having a real devastating effect on, on the landscape, in terms of bittersweet taking down trees over time, and multiflora rose just taking over large swaths of, of area, and crowding out the, the indigenous species in terms of trees, flora, even birds and insects. So, we're hoping to make a start on those two species, multiflora rose and bittersweet vine, with a licensed forester who's been working in that area for the past 10 years before we purchased it as conservation land. So, this will be a start, and hopefully, in the next few years, we'll be able to study the issue of those two species primarily, and others, and how they're going to affect the rest of the town on forest land, and maybe even have an impact on our watershed land. Right now, we're not proposing to use those funds for watershed land, but they may be in the future.
Thank you, Mark.
My name's Marsha Humphrey, I live on North Street, and I'm just wondering what the method of eradication is. Is it going to be with Roundup, or another, is it going to be used, poison being used to eradicate it, or is there another method?
Mark?
Right now, the, the proposed method is an herbicide spray. And there's two, the list of herbicide sprays that are acceptable would be taken from the Mass DEP and the Mass Department of Agriculture, a list of acceptable sprays that can be used in sensitive areas in Massachusetts. So, this is, from what I've heard, and I'm not an expert on this, but this is peer-reviewed, science reviews, about what are safe uses of these sprays in areas that are sensitive.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of Article 20 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Article carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move we take up Article 21.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 21, as in your handout.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $32,094, and to meet said appropriation, authorize the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen to borrow, pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Subsection 7, the sum of $32,094, and further authorize the town to enter into any contracts accepting the funds for $32,094. State funding reimbursement in accordance with the Recreational Trails Grant of 2017, awarded in 2017, for the purpose of constructing a new hiking trail on town-owned land, and on privately-owned land, for which the town will be granted a trail easement. The town voted to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept a property interest in this parcel, a conservation restriction with a trail easement from the private landowner, Map 209, Parcel 6, included at town meeting in May of 2017. Article 31, set funds shall be expended under the direction of the Hatfield Open Space Committee.
You've heard Article 21 read and seconded, as your handout, is there any discussion? Mark?
Mark Gilat, Open Space Committee, I'll just explain this article. The Open Space Committee applied for a trails grant to build trails on Hatfield land, up to a lookout point on Horse Mountain, which is also through a private landowner's land, for which we have permission to build that trail. We were awarded the grant for that $32,094 last year. Since most of these grants, the town has to expend the money first, and then be reimbursed for that expenditure by the state. So this article authorized the treasurer to borrow on a short-term basis, and then be reimbursed by the state for these funds.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of Article 21 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move we take up Article 22.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 22, as in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move that the town vote to authorize revolving funds for certain town departments, under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E 1/2, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, as set forth in your summary handout.
You've heard Article 22 read and seconded, as in your handout. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Article carries. Mr. Moriarty.
I move we table Article 23.
Motion's been made and seconded to table Article 23. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Tabled.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move we take up Article 24.
Second. There we go. Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 24, as in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
This will be the budget, so this will be your large sheet of paper, and yes, Mr. Moriarty.
I'm sorry, I didn't know you were still, you all said?
Go ahead.
I move to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $10,138,098. Foreign, consistent with separate purposes and separate line items, set forth in the version of the fiscal year 2019 budget prepared by the Finance Committee, approved May 1, 2018, on file, with the town clerk, and to meet said appropriations as follows. From taxation, the sum of $9,262,009. From HCTV Enterprise Funds, the sum of $87,957. From school choice, the sum of $12,000. From Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, the sum of $728,075. From ambulance revenue, the sum of $45,000. From septic betterment, the sum of $2,557. And from cemetery perpetual care interest, the sum of $500.
You've heard Article 24, which is the budget, and what I try to do is, on your, on your large sheet, on the budget, is, we look through the first page, 1 through 34, and I don't rush it, you take your time to look through it, as people have some questions. You go ahead, okay, just a minute, Michael.
I'd like to recuse myself and address the town.
Okay, so Chairman Moriarty's going to recuse himself from this position and talk down there, and I think it's because he's a member of the school committee, and he's trying to separate that from the Board of Selectmen. Thank you, I'm sorry.
Good evening, my name is Brian Moriarty, I live on Maple Street. As a member of the Hatfield School Committee, I felt it was important to comment on the fiscal year 2019 school department budget being presented this evening. While we, the residents, will vote tonight on the town's budget as a whole, I felt the townspeople should know that the school department begins formulating their budget for the following school year in the previous fall. The schools, of course, cannot wait until April or May, when the Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen finalize the budget for May town meeting, to have a plan for school opening in the fall. Along these lines of budgeting for the future, the Superintendent and School Committee instituted a process of salary increases for our non-union, non-contractual employees, called step raises, which many organizations and businesses use for budgeting purposes to predict and formulate future personnel expenses. It also is to assist the school department employees in remaining competitive with surrounding school districts. This year, all town departments are being reduced by 1% in most cases, and 2% in the DPW budget. These reductions are from the fiscal year 2018 budget submissions, and will be in effect for the fiscal year 2019 budget.
for the fiscal year 2019 budget. Because of these departmental budget reductions, the town is unable to offer all town employees any sort of a salary adjustment. There are no raises or COLA adjustments offered in the fiscal year 2019 budget for any non-contracted four employees at this time. Because of these town-wide tight financial fiscal restraints, the school committee voted last week to delay the implementation of these step increases for our non-contracted school department employees in solidarity with other town departments not receiving salary adjustments in the fiscal year 2019 budget. I'm hopeful that in the near future, we as a town will receive our additional state funding and we can work on restoring many of the town department's current budget cuts. In the meantime, I, as a school committee member and member of the Board of Selectmen, could not support these well-deserved salary increases for our town employees at the same time that we are slashing departmental budgets. It's not a popular position to take, but as an elected official, it's my responsibility to base my decisions on the overall welfare of the town of Hatfield. I'm hopeful this brief explanation helps you, the townspeople, understand my next action. I move that the fiscal year 2019 school department budget be reduced by $9,285.25, bringing the originally proposed school department budget from $4,361,125.88 to $4,351,840.63.
And you got to give, you make a motion, you second that?
Do you have to have a written motion?
He has a motion here, but he needs a second if anybody's seconding it. Are you seconding it?
I'm seconding it.
Okay. Okay, so before we go to the next step, we have to vote on the motion that Brian's proposing to reduce the school budget by $9,600. Let's see. So again, I'll read it. I move that the FY 2019 school department motion be reduced, school department budget be reduced by $9,285.25, bringing the original school department budget, the originally proposed school department budget, from $4,361,125.88 to $4,351,840.63. Is there any discussion on that? Sure.
Usually, we do this page by page, but it looks like you've jumped to page 2. But I don't, on this spreadsheet, I think Brian's talking about line 40, I can't even read that, 44, 45? And out of all these columns, is the column we're voting on the one that's labeled FY19? After the Finance Committee, that's their recommendation. Is that, it's just not clear, like, what we're looking, what we're talking about. Because the number that Brian mentioned doesn't tie with this column or this row.
Do you want to clarify that when you get to it, Brian? And again, the budget is essentially the first four pages, and we'll jump around a little bit, but I try to just start off saying, let's look at 1 through 34, but I think, I think Brian wanted to bring something up before he went too far into it because the school budget is such an integral part of the entire budget.
With this current motion, could we, instead of stripping it out, could we not just give it back to the school budget for them to deal with it as they would?
Yeah, I think, I think one concern, one concern for the Finance Committee is just historically, we've discouraged the town from opening up this budget at town meeting in such a way. Because, you know, once we start doing that, we could go line by line and open up every single budget to find, you know, some potential cost savings, but we did a long process this year. I understand the school wanting to do this in solidarity with other town employees, which I think is great, but the school is also getting other budget cuts, so they could use that $9,000 to fill some of the budget holes, because they're taking a fairly substantial cut this year anyway. So I appreciate the effort of the school committee. I would encourage them because their line item does not break up the money and salaries, so they can choose to use that money how they see fit. I'd rather see some programs cut less than take that money out at this time, because it would just go back to the levy limit. It couldn't be currently used for anything else in the budget unless we decided tonight that we were going to increase another line. So it just becomes very complicated. We should stay away from breaking open the budget like that.
Okay. Okay, is there any other discussion on that?
On the school, on line 46.
On that, and just that motion. We have a motion to reduce the school budget by the $9,285.25 or not. Then we get back to the budget. Although, in the back, Carrie.
Carrie Flaherty, Promos Path. With all due respect, I've been to most of the meetings and watched what you guys have all done, but I give, truthfully, I guess I'm going to say kudos to the school department for doing this, for them to not give their non-contractual employees raises when the rest of us as department heads are not giving our employees, as the rest of the town employees and our departments, the raises that are not going to be given to them this year. So if they're willing to give the cut, I understand it's not normal that we do this here on town floor because of all the work that you guys spend doing, but again, everybody's taken a 1% across the board. The DPW has taken a 2% across the board, and we're all taking losses, and it's really not fair to the rest of those non-contractual employees of the town for the school department to get their raises because they have it set in the step system. So I really give them a benefit for the fact that they're coming forward and making this movement tonight to show solidarity with everybody else, that their employees are equal to the rest of us in the town.
Thank you, yes.
Let me, I just clarify that, if we defeated this motion to reduce the budget, it would not mean necessarily that non-contractual employees at the school would get a step increase. It would be up to the school, the school committee is free to decide how they spend the money that's appropriated to the school to begin with. So I think that we've actually heard the opinion of the school committee, I'm guessing, expressed just now, saying that they're going to delay those step increases. So I'm assuming that if we voted the motion down, we didn't reduce the budget, I didn't hear them say that they would change their mind about that. So it's really, it's not really a question of that, I mean, I think they've already said that, it's a question of, do we want to reduce the actual school budget? How they use it is up to them.
What's the current reduction right now? And the current reduction, I'm trying to get a firm number, but I believe the current reduction to the school committee, and this is where it becomes difficult with the 1% and 2% cuts. The school is such a big part of our budget that even doing a 1%, which we went under, is a tremendous amount of money, 125?
No.
No, the whole.
No, the whole reduction this year. I believe is around 100, I want to say 180, but I don't know after our changes.
John's got that high.
Do we have a sense?
John's got that.
John, do you have the number? The proposed, what the cut would be this year, already recommended in this budget? 86?
Yeah, there you go.
So 86,000, the school's already taking as a cut, so this would be on top of that.
Go ahead, Michael.
Yeah, I mean, I hear what you guys are saying, and I hear what the school committee's saying, and I think it's great that they're offering to do this. I think it's great that they're offering to do this, and I hear what everyone is saying. The, on the budget spreadsheet, line item 46 shows that the school department, the school budget has been reduced in this proposed budget by $10,000. I, you know, I hear John saying more than that, which is, you know, obviously having an impact, but this says, I think I'm reading this right, change fiscal 18 to fiscal 19, basically an $11,000 reduction. You see that? So what I'm suggesting, where Sean is, you know, rather than these guys taking an $11,000 cut to their, hit to their budget for this coming year, use the $9,000 to subsidize that $11,000 cut. Yeah.
Right, okay. Okay. On, on the motion, on Brian's motion, all those in favor of the cut of 9,000, the school's cutting $9,285.25, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion fails. Okay, so now that we're starting back on that, let's look at 1 through 34. Go ahead, Michael.
Before we get going on the, on the line items, I just wanted to address the Finance Committee, I feel well, because I know that they've done, your person's work, and they've spent all kinds of hours on this, and I attended a lot of their meetings, and it's been an incredibly difficult challenge, not only to, to balance this budget and stay within, under the levy limit, but also deal with the other major issue that's going on in the community, and that's the issue that the DOR is involved in. But nevertheless, Darrell and you guys, you know, you're saying that this budget involves a 1% decrease in departmental budgets, a 2% decrease in department DPW budget, and a less than 1%, nevertheless a pretty substantial dollar increase in the school budget. And yet, on the summary page, you're asking the community to vote a 4% increase in our taxes. So could you guys explain that you've made all these cuts versus last fiscal year, and yet we're still faced with a 4% increase in our taxes?
Well, our costs go up every year. Health insurance this year is a big hot, big hit. Edwina helped me with that number, $125,000 increase in our health insurance last year alone, plus we have loans that we voted for at town meeting last year, which go into effect this year. You know, projects that we voted for, that we've taken on, so our retirement has gone up, so we've had costs, costs go up no matter what. There's things we can't cut out of this budget. Fixed expenses continue to rise.
Particularly health insurance.
Yeah.
All right, so let's, let's look at 35 to 63. Go ahead.
Chris Smith, Prospect. Went to a lot of meetings with you guys. The big thing that we talk about is the Bay State issue. Okay, 60,000 was the number that I heard for this next fiscal year. Yet we see on line 12 that accounting professional services is only 20,000. Okay.
So that doesn't come out of the accounting professional, that comes out of the Marlene's Town Administer, the professional services account, does not come out of the accounting account.
Okay, so what's, Darrell, what's the increase of on line 3 of 31,000? I thought you said at the meeting, the 30,000 increase was to pay for Bay State as well?
No, the expense on that is $70,000, and right now, we think that's enough money to cover what we have to do with Bay State.
So where, so how do we get to 60 again for FY19? For Bay State? I'm sorry, am I missing something?
We've got seven, in line number 3.
Okay.
If you go over to the expense, under fiscal 19, 1%, it says $70,000.
Okay.
That's where we get $60,000 for Bay State.
Okay, so what's the 20, then, explain again, the 20,000, is that going to Bay State as well?
Say that again, sorry.
Is the accounting professional services, the 20,000, also going to Bay State?
Which line?
12?
No, that would be auditing, that does not go to Bay State.
That's auditing only?
I, I don't. It's for the audit, right.
Okay. So if we were to eliminate the accountant's salary and just go and outsource to Bay State, couldn't we say, what, 50,000, 56,000 right there?
No.
No.
We eliminate the accountant, we've got, we would have to, we would have to hire Bay State on a full-time, and I'm sure we couldn't get them for $60,000 a year.
Okay.
The $60,000 a year will help supplement what, what our accountant is doing and what our treasurer's doing.
Okay.
And converting to a new, a new accounting system that is being put forth. It is certainly our hope after this year that we will, in the fiscal year 20 budget, that we will be able to spend less on Bay State.
Okay, so it, does it, is it weird to you that the town of Hadley, which is the town accounting, town accountant for the town, does it for 55,000? Does that seem odd to you?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I don't know.
Well, I'm not certain, but when we looked at the positions for the town of Hadley, their financial department was relatively substantially bigger than ours, so.
I think they're a bigger town.
I think a lot, a lot of the work is actually sort of the day-to-day, and that's not what Bay State does, sort of actually collecting the bills. So they need someone to send them the information, a transactional person, otherwise, we're asking them essentially to hire a full, two full-time people to be in here every day. So it's kind of a combined effort, really.
Wow. I, I think it's bizarre that we're paying twice as much.
Okay, how about 64 through 95? Okay, you can come up, you can come up. I'm just giving other people a chance to go to the next page as well.
This would be for the Finance Committee, this is, this is back at the Treasurer Collector area on this thing. I thought it was reported at a Finance Committee meeting that Bay State had recommended the town hire a payroll service. Is that true? Is that?
I know I recommended it, I don't know if Bay State did.
I thought, I thought, I thought Bay State, you guys had talked about a report Bay State provided that said that they recommended a payroll service. I was just wondering where that would be in here?
That is not in, that is not part of this budget, no. We, we are still taking care of the payroll services.
Okay. All right. Is there, is there a reason that hasn't been investigated?
We've, we've looked into it. Sharon, do you want to speak to it?
Sharon, Sharon, up to the mic.
I don't even know if it's tall enough for me, sorry. Sharon Stragowski, 19 North Street, Assistant Treasurer Collector. So two points is that we did look into the payroll services, and at this point, we can't afford to do that. We're all taking budget cuts, and so it's not a no, never we can do this, it's a no, not right now, we can't afford to do anything more than we're doing. And something I think will help all of you is if you look at column that says change FY18 to FY19, that line is very confusing to all of us of having sat through all of these meetings. So to your point, Chris, when you're talking about paying for Bay State and the 60,000, we only had to increase by 30 because there was already money in FY18 for Bay State. So that's where the confusion gets into that column. You have to be careful with that one, but.
Right.
Right, does that make sense, Chris?
I guess.
Okay, just trying to help. That's not.
I mean, I would like to say that in, in one of the last meetings I watched with you guys, I was watching on YouTube, and there was 21 people in the room going through this. So it's not like five people put it together or three people put it together. It's very tight, and there's a lot of, there was a lot of input from a lot of people. So it was pretty impressive to see. Is there any other questions on 96 to 124? Yes, you can come up, you can come up.
Joe.
Okay.
I'd like to ask the Finance Committee on line items for Board of Health. Back about five or six years ago, there was a plan in place to phase out the stipends of Board of Health members or to at least lower them with the anticipation of hiring a health agent. For the past five or six years, we have doubled our Board of Health costs, and I'd like to know why that didn't take place, why we are still paying double. How that transpired with, Mr. Williams and Mr. Barry, you were both there, so I'd like to know why that hasn't happened.
Why we haven't done what? We have a health agent that works for the town.
And the, and the stipends of the Board of Health members were supposed to be lowered.
They were.
No, significantly. This, the cost here has doubled.
The, and Carrie can explain this probably better than I can, but my understanding is the Board of Health members still do all the Title V work in the town, and that the health agent takes care of the inspections with restaurants and, and things like that. And am I correct, Carrie? I see you shaking your head.
I understand that, but at the time, when I was a member, and there's another member that was here at that time, that was not taken into account, that it was supposed to phase out the member stipends and pay for the health agent. The town was getting Board of Health work for half of what it's getting now, and I can't imagine that the workload has increased or has doubled.
Okay. Carrie, do you want to talk on that?
So I, you know, I went before the Finance Committee a number of times, trying to state this point, and that was the plan, and so now we've doubled the cost, and it's remained double, because we're paying a health agent and the stipends.
Yeah, okay. Have, have we approved items 1 through 34?
No, we haven't voted the budget yet. The budget's still open, and Carrie would like to...
I'd like to hear Carrie.
Carrie Flaherty, Primrose Path, Chair of the Board of Health. I got to be honest, I'm not really sure. I've never heard that we were ever going to cut the Board members' costs. I can tell you that with our health agent, he is working eight hours a week, we need him more than that. We have lots of cases in town that are going to court multiple times. He's been in court more in the two years he's been with us than we've ever been in court in the town of Hatfield because of past issues not being dealt with, or current issues that have now been brought up. He does our restaurant inspections and whatnot. The rest of us as members still answer all the phone, the secretary answers the phone calls, but the, I as the chair have to answer back everybody that calls the office. I take, myself and the other Board members take care of doing perk tests and Title Fives, and those take time, and I can tell you, if anybody wants to worry about how many hours I put in, I probably put in anywhere from 10 to 15 hours a week, myself, and I'm making about 90 cents an hour. So I did this because I chose to, I didn't do this for the money. If you want to cut our money, I guess that's your choice, but in the end, it's our health agent, we need either a full-time person and not, and the Board of Health doesn't get paid at all, which our town can't afford, or you keep things the way they are at the cost they are. We deduct, we've put in a Sharps program, we've done, we're doing a huge benefit to this town right now, for the townspeople to be able to bring their Sharps, Sharps to our station, to the fire station. The Fire Department and Police Department are very much involved with this, with us. They give containers, they take them back, we ship them off, and it's all under the cost of the expense line of the Board of Health, because we were denied a grant years ago that our past health agent tried to get for us, and in the midst of it, I found over $2,500 in our expense line that was going to get turned back, and I used it to purchase the containers to start our Sharps program that has been overly successful in this town. So in that case, we've spent our money, we've moved money, I cut money last year out of our expense line to put it into our health agent's line so that we could try to pay him more money and not ask the townspeople for, or the Finance Committee to put more money into our budget. Last year, it didn't work, they, I still moved my expense line money, but we couldn't get the increase for our health agent. This year, I asked for an increase, and clearly, we can't do it. It's not capable right now, but we're trying our best. There's a lot of stuff that's going on, and people are more than welcome to come to our meetings. They're the second Tuesday of the month at 8:00 a.m. If you have something that you want to discuss and 8:00 a.m. doesn't work for you, we'll be happy to reschedule a meeting, but I can tell you that in two, the four years that I've been on the, in, on the Board of Health, I think maybe six times we've had people actually show up to our meetings. So if you have questions, feel free to come to us or voice your concern with us, and we'd be happy to address it.
Thank you, Carrie. You had something?
I have, I have an amendment.
You got to speak to the mic.
Yes, sorry. I move to amend Article 24, Item 38, ambulance budget, in the amount of 45,000, by increasing the ambulance expense from $13,153 to $19,494.8, an additional $6,341.8, for a total budget of $51,341.8, the amount to be funded from ambulance revenue. Need a second.
Okay. Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to amend the budget, line item 38, ambulance budget, in the amount of $45,000, by increasing the ambulance expense from $13,153 to, let's see, is this what you have here, 30, is it the 38, Lydia? Oh, from $13,153 to $19,494.8, and an additional, an, an additional $6,341.8, for a total budget of $51,341.8, the amount to be funded from the ambulance revenue. So that's what we're on at this moment. Is there any discuss, is that, is there a second on that? Okay. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Now we're back on the budget. Okay. So is there any other questions on the budget that you'd like to bring up at this point before we go to a vote? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Next item.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move we take up Article 25.
Motion's made and seconded to take up Article 25, is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move that the town vote to hear any and all reports which have to do with the welfare of the town.
I wanted to take a minute and end this under, under welfare of the town, is just to say a really big thank you to John Novak and his team. He's here at countless meetings in the Town Hall, they're here every year covering this. People will get to see it and watch it and catch up on things. There's many people that can't make it here, and I appreciate that. So thank you very much, you guys. If I can just ask for a moment of silence for those serving in foreign lands to return home safely, for our aging and since-passed veterans that gave so much. We're all here safely today because of your commitment and sacrifice. Those of World War II and Korea are fading quickly, while those from the Vietnam era are here to remind us of the cost of freedom. And let's never forget to thank all of our public safety members for their sacrifice and willingness to protect us. So if we can just take a moment of silence. Thank you, and I really hope you have a very nice Mother's Day. I hope it's very, very nice out. I hereby dissolve this meeting. Thank you for coming.